Let's call this meeting to order at 7:02. And as an introduction, need to say that this session is being audio recorded, just like every other PNC Commission meeting. Please be advised that today we're also recording the video as well. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting, and will keep video of themselves on throughout the meeting. We don't have a public hearing tonight, so none of the public hearing rules would apply tonight. So we have a vacancy. I don't see. Oh, Anne. Hi, Anne. Anne, can you hear me? Hello? Anne, can you hear? Okay, so media is called to order. Why don't we appoint Anne to full voting status if she can hear?
Maybe she doesn't know she's on mute.
Yes, she may not.
And you're on mute.
All right, well, let's, let's move on and we can do that later. So number three, reading and approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of December 9th. People read that? Any, any corrections? I didn't have any. But here a motion to approve this?
I make a motion that we approve the minute from last month.
Second.
Any discussion further? All in favor indicate by raising your hand. I. Motion approved. Okay, public communications oral. I see John Casey is here. I would suggest perhaps that we move 6B4 to above 6B1, so that he can get through this. Second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, motion approved. So that's, that's, that's a new business. So 5B1, clarification of baseline of operations and aspirations of the club getaway.
But did you?
Right?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Did you move to hear John Casey before your hearing this 5B1?
No.
Where did you move him up to?
I moved him to above 6B1.
Okay, my mistake. Okay.
In new business.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll change that. Okay, and I'm sorry, Wes, go ahead.
5B1, I understand a club getaway will be coming back to us next month with, with more information.
Yeah, I spoke to Attorney Dwight Miriam, who was the attorney that David Triver has hired to help him write the regulation. They, he did not have anything available or didn't have anything prepared for tonight's meeting and asked me to please table it for the next regular meeting.
Great. Do I hear that motion?
A motion made. Then I'll second it.
All in favor signify raising your hand. Motion approved. So we'll hear that in the February meeting.
Right, so that was Adam and David. Okay, thank you.
All right, 5B2, request a board of selectmen for the reconsideration by planning and zoning commission to update the land use regulations with respect to vending food via truck or other means. This is. I'm sorry, Donna?
Um, I had, I received, John Casey came to me today and gave me a letter which is now in your meeting file regarding this. I accepted it because there's nothing, it's not an application, it's communication, so I took it in. If you want to go ahead and read it and, and discuss, so this would be considered, we need to add this as agenda item 9E, which is communication from John Casey dated 113 regarding the food trucks. So if I can get a motion to add that.
So I'll move, we add the letter as 9B, sorry, 9.
9E?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, so we'll hear that at the end of the night.
Well, you can either hear it at the end of the night, or you can hear it now because you're going to be talking about the food trucks under 5B2. It's up to you however you want to handle it.
Donna, where is this letter from Casey?
It's in the public meeting folder under 9E.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see.
I know this has been kicking around the agenda now for a few months. Do we want to proactively try to do something or wait until somebody actually wants to make an application for a food truck?
Well, what happened was on, there was a there was a food truck incident. And, and I had asked the commission to please make a determination as to whether or not it felt that food truck should still be regulated under whether or not the food truck should be regulated by the Planning and Zoning Commission and by my office. And my, my recommendation was that it not be, that adjoining towns do not have it as part of their regulations, that most of the towns have ordinances. And so the commission made the determination to kick it upstairs to the Board of Selectmen, and that happened. I was looking through the minutes. I think it's about a year and a half now that
I remember.
That this has been kicked up there. And now they kicked it back. We won't go there. Why? But I just think that they're, they're asking the commission to reconsider it. I still don't think that it's something, at least for the town of Kent, that you come out of the land use office, and mostly because a food truck can either be placed only on private property or on Route 7, which needs state regulation. So I don't think, I don't, I think it's a temporary structure. It's not something that's permanent, and I just don't think that it's something that needs to be regulated by the land use office, and there are other zoning enforcement officers who feel the same way, and so therefore their ordinances in their town instead. But it's up to you guys. If you guys want to do that, then you're going to have to write a regulation about how they're going to be regulated.
Donna, did the, the selectmen provide any guidance? Did they, in their, in their referring it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, did they give us any, any, any comments, any guidance, any comments?
Oh, Chris Garrity had thought that it should be handled under the peddler's license, but they didn't like the definition of the peddler's license, and nobody knew how to change that. So they said, you know what? What do you guys think? And then they said, just give it back to planning and zoning and let them reconsider it. So that, that, what I put in there as the topic of discussion is a direct quote from Gene's email to me. And that's all I ever got.
So what would happen if planning and zoning opted, because I'm always in favor of less regulation, not to regulate it? Then, then what?
Well, then the Board of Selectmen would actually create an ordinance, which Randy DeBello, who is the town attorney, has done on numerous occasions for different towns. And it would just be a regulation, an ordinance that's regulated through the Board of Selectmen, through the Selectmen's office. And they would be responsible for giving out permits. Just like they do now for the peddlers that come in and set up in the center of town.
Yeah, I have to say, I think that's the, that's the most logical route. I'm not for adding additional regulation. And if that's what she's looking for, for the commission to make that determination, then, then I would make that motion.
A question? A question? You smarter people than I am, exactly is a variance by the town not a regulation? Not a law? I mean, a regulation? I mean, what is the distinguishing characteristic between a variance by the town or a regulation by planning and zoning? What is the difference?
It wouldn't be a variance, it would be an ordinance.
I'm sorry, I'm using the word wrong.
That's okay.
Ordinance, I missed, ordinance is what I meant to say.
Right.
What, what is the difference?
Well, the difference is who actually is responsible for the administration. So regulations are administered from my land use office. Ordinances are regulated through the Board of Selectmen's office.
So what it says is not the difference, it's who enforces it.
Absolutely. And an ordinance must be accepted by the entire town, just like a regulation is accepted by the town, by, no, I'm sorry, not by the town. It has to have a public hearing, but it doesn't get accepted by the town. So the Planning and Zoning Commission would have a public hearing to change their regulations and act on it based on public comment. The ordinance is actually a town meeting, at which point in time the actual town itself, the town residents, either approve or not approve.
So right now, if somebody has a food truck on private property, is there, is that regulated at all in any way?
Not through my office, no. It hasn't been, it hasn't been ever.
Yeah.
Because food trucks were never allowed, because they were never in our regulation. So our regulations are written to only accept those things that are listed, and those things that are not listed are therefore not approved. But if you're having a wedding, like Bruce Adams had a wedding at his house and he had a food truck, that's fine. It's a one-off. They're not selling to the general public. It's something that's private. They don't even need Torrentonary Health approval at that point in time. But for something that's going to be used on a consistent basis, and they're going to be, it's going to be a commercial endeavor, then Torrentonary Health has to be involved, and, and it's just not something that we ever regulated in the 13 years I've been in this office.
If the truck itself has a license, though, they're the, 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 Torrenton regulates the truck itself, right? They have to pass health inspections and have a kitchen and sanitation and all the things they need to be able to sell, then food, right?
Right, they get a state license to operate, but every time they, they set up, they're supposed to get another license from Torrentonary Health. Or, well, would be for us, would be Torrentonary Health, because they're our town sanitarian and our health department.
Donna, when we're not really graded, we can't, we're not designed as an enforcement agency in short-term things like that, and when there's an ordinance, a town ordinance, and something has to be enforced, it's the state police that enforce that?
That I don't know, Adam. I'd have to read the ordinances. I don't know, I'm not sure. I don't know if there's an ordinance that tells you how, how that works, or if it's written in the actual ordinance.
Okay.
I've never, you know, I've never written one. I think the only one that we were ever involved in was the farm ordinance.
For my two cents, and we've talked a lot about this over the last couple of years. I, I don't, and I love food trucks, and I've been to places and cities that have really embraced food trucks. I don't think they belong here again. For, for lots of reasons, we don't have the ability to enforce and regulate them, and I don't think they belong here.
Well, that to me is precisely why the appropriate jurisdiction is the Board of Selectmen, that it be an ordinance heard by the people and voted by the people. I mean, to me, that's, that's the appropriate course of this.
I agree with that.
Donna, you had mentioned the other place a truck can go is on a state road.
No, no, it's just that, that's the only other location in Kent where, where it would make sense to put one. You know, like, if you look at, if you look, there was, when I was doing all of the research, New Haven, they were, they were having such a problem with their food trucks. It was, it was terrible. And so what they did was they designated a portion of a parking area next to the water, and they turned that into food truck haven, basically. And if you go down there, you can see, in the summertime, there's just food truck after food truck after food truck after food truck. Because there really wasn't enough space for them to go because of traffic. So that was how they, they ended up solving the issue. But where, where could a food truck go in the town of Kent?
Well, it sort of begs the, the prior conversation, because people are saying they don't want any trucks in Kent, so I
Public property, not private property.
Huh?
Time we're talking public property instead of
I know, but, but I, other than private property. Do you know any towns in the state of Connecticut that have their regulations, or they all bump it up to an ordinance?
There are some, but they're not like Kent.
In what way are they not like?
I mean, like, like New Haven, you know, that was something that they had created, you know, so, I mean, that's a city. But like New Milford, New Milford has an ordinance, part of their ordinance talks about, you know, you can't have one within 500 feet of another brick and mortar. You know, it's very, you know, some of the towns have it where you can, you can put in for one, but it's a lottery system only, and they only allow a certain number, they can only operate on certain periods of time. It ran the gambit. It was just whatever they could get to fit in into their little towns is just how they actually did it. I know Sharon actually had to, they rewrote their regulations to, to allow a food truck for one of the local restaurants in town that was not going to survive through COVID. So they changed their regulations so that this person could actually operate out of a food truck instead of that in their restaurant in order to stay in business. But I don't, I don't see that as a situation that we have in Kent right now. But I mean, it's up to you guys, however you want to do it. I, I, just from talking to all of my, my peers, it's just something that's easier in, in my world, in our world, that's handled through an ordinance and not through a regulation.
So it's easier because if it's an ordinance and a truck needs to be regulated, or that's the wrong word, needs to be moved or something, then the selectman can enforce it more easily than we can, because they just call the police.
I don't think that's the case at all.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why it's so, why it's easier for the selectmen's office to oversee this as opposed to planning and zoning.
I think it's easier for the Board of Selectmen because the Planning and Zoning Commission talks about structures and things that are permanently attached to the ground. And the food truck is not something that's permanently attached, attached to the ground. It's not, you can't consider it a structure, because it's movable. It can't be an accessory use, because you have to have a primary use first. So I think those are the reasons why it does not fall underneath the regulation. I
We do talk about other temporary structures, though. I mean, construction-related structures.
But those are, the constructions are the trailers that people are either living in, or, you know, the contractors, the project manager is working out of, you know, for a short period of time, for six months, and then they can be upgraded for a year, and there has to be a valid building permit that's in place in order to have them.
If, if a, if a business wanted to have a, what I'll call a semi-permanent food truck on a lot that's already allowed to be serving food, would we consider that as a permanent structure and call it a restaurant? Versus, assuming we're talking about food truck, we're talking about transitory restaurant service where it's going to come and go. Versus something that is relatively fixed, it just happens to be a truck.
My, my last
Yes.
Um, having been a merchant for 25 years in this town, I just want to tell you what happens on days, events during like sidewalk sale days or champagne scroll. We have all these outside business people parachuting in and just feeding off of all our efforts and, and advertising dollars and all this sweat equity that we put into planning these events. And it's four or five days where the businesses in town have an opportunity, not just to break even, but to actually put some money in the bank. And I don't see where a food truck would add to the, the health of the local economy. I think it would be detrimental. And, and there's nowhere to put one.
Is there, is there ever a situation where, where a food truck would be considered an accessory use to a business in town? So, you know, let's say, let's say you've got a a clothes vendor who thinks that it would be better for them to, it would be good for them to have a food truck where they could attract more people, and maybe those people would go in and, and shop in their stores. Is, is there a situation where our regulations would permit that?
I would say no, because there's nothing that, food trucks are not identified at, at all in our regulations. We don't have a definition for them. And, and I don't know how you can consider a food truck as an accessory use to a clothing store.
So what if it was that club getaway? What if club getaway, we wanted to have a seasonal food truck parked over there on private property? Would that be an accessory, would that be, you know, an accessory use of what the property is already used for?
I would say yes, because they have a kitchen and they are supplying food.
And would that only be allowed for, for people who were their patrons? Could they, could, could people be driving in from town and, and utilize that food truck? Would that be permitted? I mean, I know to club getaways is a, is a difficult example, because we're trying to figure out what they do there anyway.
Um, I, I would say no.
And conversely, there's, there, there would be no, or would there be, let me ask it that way, a situation where a food truck could be considered a home occupation within, within the home occupation guidelines for people in the rural district, or people, even people anywhere. And thereby making it a commercial endeavor for the homeowner.
Okay, I don't think a restaurant can be a home occupation, can it?
I don't think so, but a food truck is a little bit different.
You, you, there is something new now that's called the cottage industry.
Yeah, but cottage industry is very limited.
It, it is very limited.
That way, yeah.
But, but I would think that if you had a restaurant in your house in the rural district, you're in violation of the zoning regulations, because that's the commercial operation.
Right, to begin with.
Commercial in the rural.
Unless it's a home occupation, and I, I think, I, I think we all might agree that's, that a restaurant and, and would not be considered a home occupation.
But um, if you're going to push it as a home occupation, one of the things that you would need to look at would be the um, the intensity of the use. To have a home occupation now, in certain cases, you could just do it as a right, because you're just working out of your house, and then it goes all the way up to a special permit based on how many people are coming, what kind of deliveries, what's the activity, what are the hours of operation, what is the impact to the rural neighborhood? So I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see that.
So what about this? If a home occupation, if someone has a cottage food industry and they have a food truck, they fill it with food and they drive it to New Milford, this has been their food, and then they come home with their food truck and park it. I mean, I feel like that's what the, that would be a home occupation, that would make sense. But the food truck isn't, it's food, the food trucks park there. I don't think they're vending food from the truck on their private property. And they can't do it with a cottage license. I don't, I don't believe.
But somebody could come, somebody could come, whether it's in the rural district or in the village commercial district, and, and make that pitch to us as part of a special permit, and we could, and, and, and that would be and we could, we could regulate that as opposed to having a separate food truck regulation.
Okay, this, this is precisely why I think that this ought to go as an ordinance from the Board of Selectmen, because we're, we're knee-deep in what-ifs right now.
We're, we're knee-deep in what-ifs, but I don't think we're talking about the real parts of the problem. I think if, if everybody I think we need to talk about downtown.
And, and Wes, I, I would, I would respond by saying that, you know, we, we, we started with the, with the selectmen, we, we started with, with an issue with the food trucks, and, and we talked about it for a little bit, and we sent it up to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen, they talked about it for, you know, a certain period of time, and then they kicked it back to us. So I'm not sure that we, well, I'm, I'm not sure we're going to get anywhere if we just, if we say that the Board of Selectmen should, should manage it. We might say to ourselves that our regulations are sufficient the way they are, which would severely limit.
They're not allowed. Yeah, exactly.
But, but that's, but that's the case right now.
That's, that's exactly right. So, you know, rather, all I'm saying is that maybe, maybe semantics, but rather than saying the Board of Selectmen should do something, we can simply say we've discussed it and we don't want to change the regulations, the regulations should stand, which limit the, which limit the ability for a food truck to operate in the town of Kent.
Correct. But, but should they like to pursue an ordinance? I, I think that we would, we would say that.
I have a question. Who's pursuing this?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, maybe we need to wait until we actually have an applicant.
Yeah, and I, I personally think we could stay right out of the line of fire on this and let the, let it be the Board of Selectmen's issue and let them create an ordinance or not. But I, I think Wes is right, we don't need more regulations, and I don't see anyone here from the Selectmen Board, and I don't see anyone, although there probably are a few, from the Kent Chamber of Commerce. So I think we should say no and, and turn it back to them, let them figure it out.
Well, I think by, by turning it back to them, that implies we, there's two things to that. We are saying we do not think there should be a regulation, but saying that, that means we're saying we don't think there should be food trucks, period. And if the town select office thinks there ought to be food trucks, then let them figure out how to create an ordinance for it. But I think for us to just push it back to them, that's not, I, that's not the message. I think the message should be planning and zoning does not That's not, I, that's not the message. I think the message should be planning and zoning does not think that Kent needs. A regulation for trucks, because we don't think there should be trucks, period.
Should write a letter that actually describes our view accurately, like it doesn't fit as a temporary use, because there's no other. For profit.
Right.
temporary uses. And if it's a permanent food truck, we feel like it would be taken up as a special permit. As part of a normal permitting process or a restaurant. And if it's a temporary use, because we don't really manage temporary uses, we would prefer that the selectmen take that. At least that way we've defined our position. We should write it down, so it's not just. One sentence going back and forth. And be consistent. I mean, then at least I think we've stated our position and something that could be read in the record.
So would you like me to create a letter? Do you want to wait until next month to review it or just? Trust me to create the letter and present it to the Board of Selectmen for their next meeting, which is supposed to be the twentieth, but. That's the town meeting. I don't know. So I don't know when she's doing it.
I think we definitely should see the letter before it goes.
Okay.
Absolutely. If it, if it means putting it off for another month, then do it, but. We've got to make it, we've got to make it clear. We're not just, you know, turning our back on our responsibility. We've, we've got an opinion. And based on our regulations and based on everything. And if the. And the Selectmen's Office could determine not to do anything too.
Yeah, they they absolutely can. I mean, and I know when it was first kicked up to them. They did put a moratorium on it. And they put the moratorium on it because of COVID. They said, well, you know, who's going to be operating anything like this with COVID now? So let's just put a moratorium on it and nobody can have a food truck. And then the board switched and then I don't know if that's what drove her to send it back to us. I don't know. I never. So I will put something together based on the conversation that we're having now. And present it at the next meeting in February.
I think that's a plan.
Okay. Sounds good. So I just need a motion to table this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks, Donna.
Welcome.
Okay, moving on to new business. There are no public hearings. And we have moved six. B four, John Casey, for Kent Green LLC, change of use from restaurant to artist studio. At twelve Kent Green Boulevard. To the next slot. John, are you here?
He's here, but muted, so I'm asking him to unmute.
Yeah. I think I did. There. Am I here now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, so this is a woman. Who is wants to open a store, excuse me, open a business. Which gives art lessons to children. Primarily children, but if an adult came forward and said, you know, I want art instruction, they could do that too. They, they've been in business in Dobbs Ferry for twenty years. They've recently moved to Wingdale. They've looked around Kent, they like Kent and. They think it's a good place for their business. They, I think primarily cater to children, as I, as I said before. After school, I I'm not saying that it's a daycare center, but it is a drop off place for children. To receive lessons. I think they'll have, you know, birthday parties there and that sort of thing. They have leased a thousand square feet, for me, contingent upon approval of the change of use, and that's why we're here. That's why I'm here anyway.
John, help me out. Is is a twelve Kent Green Boulevard, is that, is that Cozy's?
No, it, well, I'm in the process of phasing out the restaurant business. In in that, in the building that is the red building directly across from the Union Savings Bank. And the taqueria occupied two thousand square feet. I designed, I divided that space in half. And. And and so I'm hoping to close out the other side of it too. I have. Bunch of kitchen equipment sitting around in a, in the old kitchen and I'm, I'm gonna.
Join the meeting.
Hopefully, hopefully, I'm going to get out of being. A landlord for that type of business in that specific building.
Okay, so that's the location right across from Union Savings.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Well, it's for sure that Kent doesn't need another restaurant. So, I mean, I think an artist studio is is a, is a great use for this. Also is less parking too.
I would agree, yeah.
So do we need a motion to? To accept the change of use from restaurant to artist studio at twelve Green. Kent Green Boulevard, map nineteen block forty-two, light eight. If we do, that's the motion.
That's a motion.
Yep.
Are you allowed to teach in an artist studio? I didn't realize that was the.
Yeah, it it is, it is art lessons. They're, they're giving art lessons there. To children primarily.
Why don't we get a second, then we'll discuss it.
I'll second the motion.
Now, now let's, now discussion.
I just looked up the definition, it just didn't list anything about teaching or having.
What do they call their place in Dobbs Ferry?
It's the same as here. It's called Scribble Art Workshop.
Workshop, that's different than studio.
Okay, I I'm not sure of the nuanced difference there, but I'm not disagreeing with you.
So I know that we have a definition for an artist studio in the regulations. But. Is it a permitted use in the, in the, in the VR one?
This is commercial overlay or is it VR one?
Well, wouldn't it be the same as if somebody was giving dance lessons, like Star Studio was giving dance lessons to. Children?
It's in.
It's very similar to that. Yeah.
It's in the Village Center Commercial District.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Donna.
So I think there's already that use existing in in Kent Green.
It's been education type use, studio of artistic endeavors. If we have that listed in there.
Okay, did you answer my question? Thanks, Donna.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there, is there more discussion?
Join the meeting.
So would we like to take a vote on this? Here are no further discussion? All in favor? Signify by raising your hand. Motion is carried. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Okay, six B one. Discussion and possible decision for the scheduling of a public hearing to change the December seventh. Two thousand twenty-one town of Kent zoning regulations to opt out. Of certain subsections of Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine. Accessory apartments and parking requirements for residential use. This was a house bill that was just passed by the state legislator. That tends to override local zoning in order as a. I guess a mandated. Override of of. Our zoning, which, which right now, this is, this is opposed to our zoning. So the towns, I understand, have a, can opt out of this. And I think this is what it's about. So, so rather than discuss it now, we have to, we, we, we need to set a public hearing in order to opt out. So I would suggest that we, we do that, but we need to learn the meeting. So it would be for the March meeting that we would set this public here. And I think we should certainly discuss it and perhaps opt out of it, but 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 we need to set up that meeting.
So I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing. Because we have to do that regardless. Of our discussion.
I will second that.
All right, so. I guess in discussion. I think there's going to be a lot of time to discuss this at the, at the public hearing. So I think we should just set the, the meeting date and go on.
Wes, I think that, maybe I'm wrong, I mean, because I don't understand the issue. I I'd like to understand the issue. And what the state is trying to mandate us before. We have a public hearing about it. Is there something that we're going to read or is something that we have to discuss next month?
I think this is the case, and unless we opt out of this, the state statute will, will prevail. So it it basically says that for a single studio. Of only one parking space is, is required, where we require two in our, in our parking. For example. Right now, we regulate. Accessory dwellings. This is saying that, 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 that's not, that's not in the purview anymore. Of local zoning. To regulate accessory dwellings.
We can only opt out of the optional things, right? Can we opt out of mandatory things also?
Yeah, you can't opt out of the mandatory, but you can opt out. This was originally proposed. There was no opt out and and all of the. The attorneys and the land use administrators. Were crazed, because here's the state coming in and taking away all of the rights of the planning and zoning. Commissions and what they can do. And the people who had the biggest. Issue with this were that we're both small towns in both the northwest corner and the northeast corner of Connecticut. And they really didn't feel that they were being properly represented during this whole process. So they did end up compromising and they have given the opt out. So back. I gave you guys in the summer of twenty twenty-one, there's the. The quarterly newsletter that I send out and in that quarterly newsletter, it talks about accessory apartments. So as of January first of twenty twenty-two, zoning regulations must designate locations or zoning districts where accessory apartments are allowed. They must also permit as of right, at least one accessory apartment on any single family lot. And the apartment cannot be required to be affordable housing. Zoning regulations cannot impose setbacks, lot size, lot frontage, a lot coverage requirements greater than required for a single family home. Those limitations on local control also include landscaping, tape and architectural standards. None of which can exceed those required for a single family home. So it appears that the only limits placed on accessory apartments. Is is if the home is serviced by a well or private sewage system. So that was a little bit of a giveaway, you know, kind of a, a give. But. What they're saying now is that as part of this public act, commissions have until January of twenty-three to amend their zoning regulations. To comply with this new law, or you can opt out. Of the legislation and in order to opt out of this. The commission and the town's legislative body must act before January first of twenty twenty-three. So by changing the regulation to the wording that Mike has provided, which is what's in the public folder. That gives the commission. That's, that's the opt out of this legislation. And then we have to then present to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen also have to opt out a two-third vote. For the town to opt out of this legislation, but planning and zoning needs to start a process. And to do that, we need to change the regulation.
We're just talking about the accessory apartment provisions right now. Okay. Yep, I see it.
Hey Donna, do you still have access to a recording of the, of the talk or the meeting that that Mike? Ziska. Presented to us those, the, the, the new regulations and our ability to opt out.
That's still on the town's website. I can get you the date of when he was here, but it should be there on, still on the town's website.
So I, I, I think that might, that, 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 that discussion, that presentation by Mike might be a good place to start. Or at least to, at least a, a middle ground for the commissioners to. Get a better understanding or to refresh their memory as to what Mike told us back then.
Right. Where did Adam go? Um, exactly, I mean.
Can't you see me? I can see you, Adam.
That weird.
Matt can sees me, that's all that matters.
That's all that matters.
You know what, I dissed it for a minute and I guess I didn't jump back up on top when I came back. Maybe you have to re-pin me.
Yeah, I may have to. Um, there you are. I'm going to re-pin you. Okay, there you are. But anyway, so that's, that's. That is the guidance that Mike has been, has given us. I, I mean, again. My main goal is to make sure that the zoning regulations are in compliance with all the public acts that came through last summer. Before I leave. So this is, this is the other one. This is one of the other ones that we need to do. The next one will also be restaurants and outdoor dining. So. My recommendation is to make sure that you guys are going to be in compliance with all the public laws and that everything is going the way that it should. Up out now, you can always have a discussion later on. And make the decision as to whether or not you want to change the regulation and then you just go ahead and change it back if you want to. I think our regulations are set up. Really well. Accessory apartments. Are actually as of right, no matter what district you're in, and it basically is the conversion of a single family house to a two-family house and it's as of right. Zoning permit only. So I, I think that's pretty lenient. I don't think that we really need to look at changing them. But, you know, that will be up to you guys. I just need to get this done and then you can move forward after I'm done. Matt's laughing.
All right, so, so the motion was to set the public hearing. And it was seconded, I think we ought to vote and then go on. And talk about this in March.
Yep, so the date would be March tenth, because of my statutory requirements of the thirty-five days of notification. I can't, it, I can't get the letters out in time to make the February meeting. If you want to have a special meeting to just discuss this, I can come up with a different date or it would be the March tenth regular meeting.
So there's, we've got a year to handle this. This is, we don't have to.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
So all in favor of setting that public date? Motion carried. Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
So six B two modifications to high watch recovery. Adam, could you take it from here? Because I've got to recuse myself.
Or.
I'm going to recuse myself as well.
So we lost Wes and. And Darrell, so.
So we should.
Bring up Ann and Matt, the voting status.
Exactly, yeah.
One sec, I'll just pulling this up. So High Watch is Donna. Wants to. Turn one of the buildings into a daycare center.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
So if you remember, when they first came before the commission, it was for the. All the work that they're doing at 62 Carter Road. And during that whole discussion, two things happened, the 54 Carter Road, which is a log cabin that's next door to 62. One is that that piece of property was actually absorbed into 62 Carter Road in order to accommodate for parking in the turnaround driveway. And the other thing that happened at that time was that there was a discussion about the use of that building. And that building was going to be used for therapeutic purposes for art programs for the residents. So I believe that a modification needs to be done for the special permit to change that use. From that artist. Their therapeutic use. And so that now 54 would become daycare strictly for the residents, not the residents, the employees. The children of their employees. So that is the reason why they're in front of us. The question that I but. I have one question and for for you guys. Usually when you modify a special permit, you can either do it as the special permit was granted, which is via a public hearing. Or if you don't feel that the change is. Significant enough, then you don't have to have another special permit, another public hearing. So that I think is number one that you have to decide. And then I think then you can have the discussion on the actual change of use. And I know Jason is here and he is available to speak to it. And answer any particular questions that you might have.
Well, before we have a discussion about it, why don't we? Hear from the applicant. Why doesn't Jason? Talk about the daycare center.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Jason Perillo, representing High Watch. I am the vice president of communications there. It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. You know, and as Donna mentioned, we are. You know, it's funny how you observe things over time and it's been very clear to us that. You know. Affordable childcare is very difficult for a lot of our employees, particularly honestly, our younger moms. You know, they don't necessarily live close by, so it's hard for them to balance things and we recognized as. An organization that it's something we could offer them, especially to our. You know, lower, lower, you know, lesser compensated employees that we could subsidize that as well. The the cabin, as we call it, as Donna referenced, 54 Carter Road is sort of the logical place to do that. And it would be again, just for the children of employees of High Watch. There is. You know, no intention to expand it beyond that to the children of non-employees. You know, as you know, you know, this is heavily regulated by the state of Connecticut. So anything we did at that facility in terms of staffing and structure. Would be subject to the regulation and inspection of the state of Connecticut. And again. In a perfect world and then take it for a grain of salt because I'm representing the applicant. But we actually think that this is an appropriate accessory use that, you know, could possibly be handled by a certificate of zoning compliance. But Donna's point is 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 well taken in that there's a specific. Point enumerated in the special permit as it pertains to 54 Carter Road. As I recall from those discussions, the concern the commission had was primarily around outpatient services and High Watch being able to. Provide therapeutic services to individuals who are not residents, which is why the commission, as I recall. Limited 54 Carter Road to therapeutic services solely for our residents. So again, this would not be opening up care to individuals who are not residents. In fact. It would be providing. Appropriate benefits and services to the children of our employees. It would be greatly appreciated if this were something that commission viewed as minor and and did not hold a public hearing. But that's that's sort of the the four corners of what we have planned. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I've I've read the. The letter that High Watch submitted. And they've been pretty clear that it wouldn't have any more than 12. Children and that all the children. All the children are children of employees of High Watch. Honestly, my first. My first feeling was this was a a further expansion. Of of High Watch, which. I was not okay with. But this. This building. Was was going to be part of High Watch was designated as a. Building for use within the for the residents. At High Watch. So. I I'd like to hear from the other commissioners and I'd like to hear from the public, but my first thought is it's not really. A further expansion of High Watch and. And the change from being a place where residents can go and do art to. A building that is a daycare center is more minor in nature and doesn't require another. And another, a new special permit, but I want to hear from. Everyone else also, so. So does anybody in the public want to say? Have a comment, Ellen?
It's not a public hearing. Adam, it's not.
Okay. Oh, because it's just performer. Okay, so do any commissioners have a comment, Ann?
What are the hours? What would the hours be?
Commissioner, so the intention is to start at 7:00 AM. That is when our first shift of nurses arrives. You know, that that's the 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 change over there. So we want to be able to be available to them. And then we're looking at a closure of probably 5:30, which is pretty standard for for the industry.
And so the daycare would open at seven or your shift starts at seven?
Both. So obviously, we would have staff there before seven to prepare things. But at seven, our employees would be able to drop their children off. And we would, of course, on 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 the the shift change side, we would make the accommodation.
And with buses, school buses be coming in to drop off kids after school?
That's a great question. The answer is no, there is no intention to offer an after school program. This would be a full day program.
So this is just for very young children?
That's correct. If if you've got children, if an employee has children who are of school age. They're going to go to school and many schools, as you know, have after school programs. This would not be a bus stop whereby. You know, kids would finish school, get on the bus and the bus would would drop them off at 60 or 54 Carter Road, which is actually now 62. That's not what we have planned here and and we're limited at 12 because, you know, from a state perspective, that changes. The designation and the regulation. So that's why we need to keep it under 12. And obviously, it it becomes less intense at that point, too.
Under 12?
So 12 children. Yep.
Seven days a week, Jason, or?
Right now, we're planning on five because, you know, typically on a weekend, there's less of a need for. You know, for for childcare services, but I'm going to be honest, I I I can't commit to that. Our plan is five, our budgeting is five. But that's not, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead the commission. Obviously, if we had employees and there was this demand and a call for. You know, especially our our nurses and our millu staff who are working on weekends, if if there was a need for it. We would be inclined to open on the weekends.
Well, if the commission approves five days a week and it comes seven, you'll have to come back for a modification for that.
Totally reasonable.
So the public base daycare center is absolutely a special permit. The the authority we're looking at here, I guess, is the accessory use not listed above. Which is incidental to the primary permitted use. I guess if the the permitted use has, I'm sorry, permitted principal use is. A place where people work and people have kids. That would be our authority. I guess that's kind of a question for Donna.
Yep.
Was that a yes affirmative or that was a yes acknowledging the question?
That was yes and the affirmative. Yeah, yeah, that's where it needs to come in under.
So does anybody else have? Any questions? Any commissioners?
Summertime hours?
This, Matt? Yeah, Ma, it's it seems, Adam, right? There's two questions, as you said in the beginning, there's there's one whether whether the use requires. Would with the whether whether the use would require a a public hearing because we're changing the special permit? And then the second, then we either answer at the public hearing or we answer tonight as to whether we believe that this use is permitted. So one is, is this a is this a a further? Is is it increasing the nonconformity? Or not? And if we determine that it's not increasing the nonconformity, then then we can discuss it tonight. If we determine that it is increasing the nonconformity. Then it has to go to public hearing or if it's a. If it's. We consider a a significant enough change, then it has to go to public hearing. So I think that's that's the the first question. That is, so the the question for everybody, and I'd like to hear from everyone, is if you think this is. A change that is minor. To the to the existing special permit and and what the the previous use of the building was. Or whether you. Think it's not so minor and it and at that point is going to require. A new a new here, a new public hearing and.
Yeah, the building is an artist's studio now, effectively.
Jason, the the building is designated as a. Right now, under this, under the existing special permit as a place that your residents would go to do art.
Commissioner, actually, as the special permit is. Is stated now, it is specifically for therapeutic uses. Therapeutic care offered to our residents. There's actually nothing, to the best of my recollection, that, you know, specifically states. Art therapy. It is it is more generic in that it is simply therapy. But yes, it it is limited solely to residents. And again, as I said. You know, from my recollection from the the debate on this and the discussion on this was that, you know, the real focus was making sure that we didn't open up an outpatient clinic.
But it also includes.
That's why that designation was made, again, in my recollection.
It it also includes the ability for for your staff to 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 spend the night. Right? That that special permit includes that.
No.
Actually, no, that was what we were originally doing with it when the application came before the commission. But as the special permit is written, that is not included in in our permissible use of 54.
How is it set up now, Jason?
Commissioner, so it it is gentle, there's a little bit of office space to support the therapists and then there is a group room. Where group therapy is is conducted.
And what kind of. Renovation would you need to do for the daycare?
Internally, very little. The one thing we would need to do is offer outside space that has to be appropriately fenced. And you know, again, heavily regulated. So we would, anything we did there would have to conform with state regulations.
And bathrooms?
No, our research indicates that the bathrooms are significant and not sufficient.
Have you you you've not talked to Stan or Joe, the building official or the fire marshal?
Uh, no, Donna, we have not.
Okay.
We felt that premature.
Yeah, okay, right. Because to me. If the commission is going, either way, if the commission decides to approve this. I think there's going to need to be a couple of conditions of approval and one is that. You know, you you need to get Torrenton area health approval because from what I understand. You might end up having to put in a new septic system. I'm not sure. You'll need to work with Kathy on that in the state. And I think one of the reasons why the building. Originally, we were told that the building was going to be used for staff to stay in. Because of inclement weather. But but then it turned out that that building needed to be sprinkled. So you might need to check with Stan, the fire marshal, to see if that's still the case. So that's probably going to, that will, I'm going to recommend that that be a condition of approval, approval by the fire marshal. Torrenton area health approval and then obtaining all appropriate state licenses. I think you've got the clearance as far as the driveway sightlines are concerned. And it's not going to be that you have any additional traffic because the people are coming there anyway. So you know, you're not going to allow people to drop their children off if they decided they want to take the day off and go shopping. Right? You're you're, they're going to only be if they're at work.
Donna, that's correct. They're gonna, they're gonna come to work, they're gonna bring their child to the childcare center and then they're gonna spend eight or more hours with us. Doing their jobs. And in terms of the conditions you mentioned, all of those are essentially, we have no problem with that. All those are essentially de facto because we need all of those. To obtain the license from the state of Connecticut.
Exactly.
Anyways, so we would have to do that anyways.
You know, they like to put stuff in.
Totally fine.
For me, at least. The amount of renovation that has to be done. Is a factor. To me, as far as falling under whether this is a minor addition to the. To the existing special permit or it's more than a minor. And. I'm not sure if you, I I don't think you know exactly how much renovation. You you're going to need to make. And. I mean, unless everybody feels differently, I. I don't think I can, I can make that judgment whether it's a minor. Or or more significant change right now until you come to us to tell us what you're going to need to do. To make this a daycare center. And I'm wondering if you want to table this for a month, so. You can look at this and come back to us next month and tell us what you're going to need to do. So we can make this.
I I I have have. No objection to that. If you want more information and I can offer it in this type of forum, I'm I'm certainly happy to do that.
I just have one more question. I'm sorry, Jason, what's the square footage of that building?
I can't answer that. So to Commissioner Manus's point, I'm happy to come back with it.
So we would need a a motion unless anybody has any more questions for Jason. We would need a motion to table this. Until next month and Jason will will. Come back with. With, I don't, I'm not coming up plans, but I think we need a pretty clear idea of. Of of what kind of renovations you're going to do inside and outside to make it a daycare center. So that we can better look at this and make this decision.
Do, are you going to table it and have it come back as a public hearing? Or are you going to table it to get the information to make the determination as to whether or not it needs to be a public hearing? I'm I'm a little bit confused about that point.
I I think we have to make the determination. Unless everybody thinks this is a significant change, and I I'm not sure that it is. So. Right now, I'm, I just think that he should come back with. With information. About what they're going to need to do so we can make the decision. About whether. It's a minor change in that it will fit within the existing special permit or. or if we're gonna, they're gonna need to pull a new special permit and we're gonna have to have a new public here.
But Adam, is the, I mean, the construction is, I wanna say it's incidental, but we're talking about the long-term use as what shifting. I mean, isn't that really the question here is if that's an intensification or a modification that's out of line? I mean, the fact that they'll have to do some construction, that'll happen and it'll be done. And I don't know if we base a permit for a change on the fact that construction has to happen.
I guess I disagree with that. Because if there's a major, if they have to make major changes to that building, I think that is, that changes the way we look at, a- a- at the use and whether it's a minor change to the existing special permit. That building wasn't gonna be changed. The building was gonna stay just the way, the way it was. So now, if, if they're just gonna add a playground to the outside, they're gonna make some minor changes on the inside, maybe this is a minor addition to the special permit. But if they're gonna have to really rebuild that building, they're gonna make major changes, it's gonna look significantly different, then I think that's a more, a, a more significant change to the special permit. Yes, Jason?
Oh, Commissioner, thank you. Um, one thing I will say is, there, there is no plan to expand the footprint. Um, if there were a need to make any changes, it would solely be to the interior of the building. Uh, and I will say this, um, you know, and maybe this is just academic. Uh, when the special permit was approved, uh, the use was clearly for therapeutic services within the building with no further explanation or clarification. So, the group room we have, which was there, um, we would have been perfectly permitted to carve that up into four smaller offices for one-on-one therapy. Uh, that would have been significant construction inside the building, but clearly permitted within the special permit. So I, I see the point. But significant, you know, changes, um, internally could, could conceivably be done now. Again, we don't have any intention to do that with the current use. Just saying.
I'm not, I'm really not concerned about what happens on the inside of the building. Uh, I, if you guys need to move walls, you, whatever, that's, that's not, um, but Donna brought up a lot of issues. You have a lot of regulations around a daycare. Um, I just think that you guys should look at that a little bit more and, and come back to us with, with a, with a clear idea of what you're gonna have to do and what kind of renovations you're gonna have to make to be able to make it a daycare.
Like, as I said, I, I have no objection to that. I'm happy to do that and answer as many questions as I possibly can.
So I'll move, we table, uh, six B two until the next meeting.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Hold on, Adam, I, uh, wait, before you vote, I'm sorry. Um, it's, it, uh, have we been clear with the applicant as to what information, um, we want them to bring back to us? Um, it's, and, and let me ask the applicant, Jason, are you, are you clear with, with what's been requested of you for the, for the next meeting?
Um, uh, Commissioner, I believe so. Um, what I have in my notes is that the commission would like clarity on whatever renovations we would need to make, um, based upon the regulatory needs, uh, to meet the state's requirements. So I can, I can provide that. If there's anything else, please let me know. And I, and I'll, I'll do my best, but that's the singular thing I have here that the commission is requesting.
Adam, that's, that's, uh, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. That satisfies, does that satisfy you?
It is. I think we need to know what they're gonna have to do to, to make this a, a daycare facility.
I, I think that they should tap into Torrenton area health. I think they should tap into the fire marshal, at least those two, because that's really what's going to be driving, what's gonna need to be done to the property and, and the building itself. So, um, so Jason, if you could add those, just those two contacts, um, um, you know, to questions, that would be great.
Is that okay with the commission?
Yeah. Any other?
I, I will simply again say, you know, w- we, we can't be licensed without the okay from the health district and the fire marshal, but I'm happy to provide that.
I realize that. It's, I'm not, I'm not worried about whether you guys will do what's necessary to be licensed at all. Uh, I think you guys are, do a great job in that respect. But what I am concerned about is, is what you're gonna need to do to make that happen. And I think the commission needs to know just, eh, because for it to fall in as a minor addition to the existing special permit, we have to understand what you're gonna need to do.
Totally reasonable, Commissioner.
Any other comments?
I, I, I would just like to say, Adam, that I think this is a really wonderful thing that High Watch would do, which would be to provide, you know, childcare for their employees. I think it's terrific. Um, if we're going to be looking for all this additional information, it kinda leaves me feeling, right now at least, that we probably should lean towards a public hearing. Because it's, I, I'm feeling like it is a more than, you know, that it's a substantial change in use. And just to be on the safe side for everyone, we probably should think about in the future, the next meeting, um, requesting a public hearing on it. I, 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 I think it's a great thing. I, I'd like to see it happen, but I, I just think given everything that has taken place in the last couple of years on this property, that that might be the, the most prudent thing to do.
I, I don't disagree with you, Karen, but that's why I want this information for that exact reason. I want, uh, so we understand what they need to do, and then as commission, we'll decide whether or not this is gonna need to, this will, is minor, will fall underneath the existing special permit or it won't.
So we'll be able to make that decision at the next meeting, once we gather all their information. We can still request a, a public hearing if we.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, that.
Okay.
All we're doing is getting the information so we can make that very decision.
Great, thank you.
Any other, eh, Jason?
Uh, sure, uh, Commissioners, I, I, I would just simply say this. If, if, if the commission believes that it's gonna go down the road of a public hearing, and that, that's kinda where y- your heads are, I would rather that determine, not that my opinion matters, but I would rather that determination be made today, so that we can have a public hearing next month, rather than come back next month, provide a whole lot of information, and then again, have to come back for a public hearing.
Well, so then, uh, I'm, I'm, I have a motion on the table, but I wanna ask the commission, if you're all leaning towards towards this needing a new, a new hearing, then let's, um, then let's make that determination now. If everybody's really not sure.
So Adam, let me withdraw my motion then.
Okay. So, eh, I mean, maybe I need to take a poll, does, you know, I, I know Karen is, is leaning towards it needing a public hearing. Matt, do you have a, listening to what's said, have, do you have a feeling of whether this is a minor change or it should probably go to a public here?
I think I'm with Karen. I, 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 I think, I think it's minor in nature, but I think that that it's a non-conforming use, it's pre-existing non-conforming. It's, we're, we're sort of on the, we're on the razor's edge of whether it's, of whether it's going to be increasing the non-conformity or not. It's certainly not decreasing the non-conformity.
Right.
Um, so I, I, I think that the commission is ultimately gonna make a decision based on what's in the regulations, um, whether they get public input or not. But to be on the safe side, it's, we, we probably wanna have a public hearing, we probably wanna avail ourselves of the opportunity to get as much information as we can. I don't wanna draw this out, but, and I could probably, I, I could probably vote on, on the efficacy of the application tonight. Um, having looked through the regulations and having thought about it myself. But, you know, it's not, not being sure that I'm gonna be a voting member the next time we hear it, it's maybe you shouldn't be listening to me so much.
Knowing who, who, you know, that we're gonna have the same people.
Oh, you know, that's true.
Who are, withdraw you, you, you and, um, and will most likely be. Alice, do you have, um, a thought?
Um, I just thought that the, the fact that it's a change of use doesn't in and of itself command or demand a public hearing. I mean, we just did that, uh, tonight. We changed the use on something and the subject of a public hearing did not come up. Uh, I don't think that necessarily justifies it. I think there's no harm in a public hearing. I think, um, better to have one than to, you know, look back and say we should have had one kinda thing. So, um, I would say we should have a public hearing and I'm not quite you guys can help me on that. I don't know if we need to have the information delivered before we make the decision of a public hearing. I think that's what we're trying to decide, right?
Yeah.
And that seems a little bit minor and just costs time. Maybe we could make that decision now.
Okay. Anne, do you have a, a thought, eh, eh, on whether it should, there should be a public hearing?
I, you know, I'm, I'm with Karen. I think daycare is a wonderful thing. Um, it's very benefit to off your employees, but I do think that, uh, we should open it up and, and let everybody have.
Okay. So David, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, um, we do have a clear majority of, of people who want the, uh, who think it should go to a public hearing, but I, I'd like to get your opinion.
Yeah, I, I think based on what the applicant has said so far, would be disinclined to feel we would need a public hearing. Just 'cause it's not a part of the public, it's related to existing employees on staff. Just doesn't feel like it's that big a change. Not sure what we would gain from the public hearing necessarily, that might change our minds about that, but again, I, if the applicant, uh, the fellow commissioners feel that is useful information to gain that, and that here from the public and the na- the nature, I mean, obviously, I'm happy to go along with it.
So then, um, I'm gonna have to ask somebody to make a motion, to whether, uh, for, for a public hearing or against a public hearing.
I don't, I don't think.
Wanna make a motion?
I don't know if you need to do that.
Oh, we don't? Okay.
No, I, I think, I think just based on the discussion, I think what you should do is I think you should table it um, to the next meeting, at which point in time a public hearing will be held, if that's what the majority has said. I don't think you need a motion.
I think that's what the, I, I didn't know that we didn't need a motion. Then that, that's what, then that.
Matt, do you, Matt, do you disagree?
Um, I, 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 I think I do, Donna, but I don't wanna overstep my bounds. So, uh, um, I, I thought we should have a motion. I, and I'm on the fence as to whether we go to a public hearing or not, you know, so, um, you know, a- again, I, I would have, I would have made the motion just to get, just to get it on the vote, that we, we could all vote. Um, and then the option would be either we, we go to a public hearing, or we table this until the next meeting, until we get, you can get some more information from High Watch. Um, and, and if we don't, if we don't go to a public hearing, then we can get some information from High Watch and then deliberate it next month. So either way, we're gonna be deliberating, deliberating in a month. It's just being, um, um, being cognizant of the, of the needs of the, of the applicants, um, for what that's worth. So, um, I would make a motion that that we, um, if I may, I would, I would make a motion that we, um, recommend or, or table this discussion to a public hearing, um, next month. Um, and if I could go so far as to say that if that motion, um, if that motion does not carry, that we ask the applicant to bring to the commission meeting next month the information that we had previously, um, requested.
Do we need a second?
A second?
I think you'll need the first part of that motion, right?
Yeah.
So a second from anybody?
I'll second that.
Just quick discussion, what would, do we want the applicant to bring for a public hearing? Would it be the same thing, or is there something else?
I think it would be all the same thing.
Okay.
The, for, the additional public hearing really separates, it'd be a new special permit. It separates it from the existing special permit.
No, it wouldn't be a new special permit. It would be a modification to the existing special permit. But you have the option to modify an existing special permit, either through the same way that you granted it, which was public hearing, or just at a regular meeting if you felt that the change was insignificant.
Okay.
So we just.
Go ahead, Donna, I'm sorry.
Uh, you just, you just need to call the, the motion. A vote, you need to call the vote.
Um, so there's no other discussion? So, all in favor? Please raise your hand. One, two. Matt, you're not in favor of your motion?
Yeah, Adam, I made the motion to, to, to move the discussion along.
And all, all, so, oh, there were only two, two people for the motion and.
No, there was three, Alice.
Oh, I didn't see Alice's hand. Okay, so then the motion carries.
Alright, so it will be a public hearing.
Yeah. Adam, how did you vote? I mean, I'm counting, I'm counting. I'm counting three, at least three.
Seven people, we need, we need to call the nodes.
Yeah.
There's six people, but go ahead.
Honestly, I, I feel that this is.
You still need to call the nodes.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm not voting for the motion.
So the nodes are?
I mean, no.
Three to three.
The nodes.
Yeah, so, no.
So, so it will not be a public hearing then?
Exactly, yeah.
Everybody spread out on my screen.
That's why you gotta pin him.
Oh, we're supposed to be an odd number.
Oh, can I pin people? I thought only you can.
Donna has to pin him.
Only I can. Um, alright, so because it was a, um, a tie vote, it means that it's a no, because it's not an affirmative. So the next meeting that will be held on, in, um, February, which is whatever date it is, um, will just be a regular meeting, not a, not a public hearing. Okay, so, uh, Jason has his hand raised, I see.
I, I, I just wanna make sure, I'm gonna give you folks the stuff you want in the right forum. So, um, you'd like clarity from the Torrenton area health district, uh, from the fire marshal, and you'd also like some clarity and specificity on what renovations would be needed in order to conform with, um, state regulations. Is that correct?
Yes, on the inside and outside, you know.
Inside and outside, understood, yes.
Place to play outside, you're gonna have to fence that in, et cetera.
Correct, absolutely, understood. Thank you.
So now I just needed another motion to table, um, the application to the February meeting.
I'll move, we table it.
Thanks, David. Second.
Matt's second. Matt is raising his hands to second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay.
The floor motion carries. And Wes?
So I must say that was a, uh, quite an exhibition of, uh, of, uh, of voting, um, of, of slickness. That was good.
Thank God this things record. That's why I have to say.
Great.
Okay.
Alright, six B three, discussion and possible decision of scheduling a public hearing to change December seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Alright, 6B3, discussion and possible decision of scheduling a public hearing to change December 7th, 2021. Town of Kent zoning regulations with regard to restaurant open dining. Now, this is the same thing, Donna, which is that the, the March, we would hear the.
Yes.
Both of those in March.
Yes, and, and basically, um, because of COVID, all of the regulations that all of the towns had in place with regard to outdoor dining was kind of passed aside. So that the restaurants could actually, um, stay in business during COVID. Those executive orders are, um, that one particular executive order carried through. Um, even though he had canceled a lot of his other executive orders. And this particular one expires at the end of March, March 31st. And so, starting April 1st, unless he decides that he wants to push it forward, which is what the restaurant. Um, coalition is trying to do at this point in time. Um, will mean that, that outdoor dining goes back to. The way it was prior to COVID. And if you remember, we kind of loosened up all of our outdoor dining restrictions. So now. You can change it. What they're, what they're hoping for is that. We're going to be able to make outdoor dining as a right. Um, and so we need to change our regulations because. We have outdoor dining as a right up to a certain number of seats, and then it becomes a site and approval with a certain number of seats. And then it becomes a special permit with a certain number of seats. So I think that, um, I think we need to. Um, to look at the regulation and figure out how we're going to change that. And that's why I am proposing. That we hold a public hearing in March with the accessory dwellings, um, to talk about the restaurant. That's, this is the third, this is the third change to the public act that I need to get, um, squared away before I leave. Sorry for the long-winded explanation, but, um, that's. So I just, just like we did with the other one, we need a motion to go ahead and sc- schedule a public hearing to change the December 7th town of Kent regulations. Um, um, to the March 10th meeting.
Can I get a motion? For that?
You wanna make that, Adam?
Oh, no. Oh, I'll make the motion. I forgot. You're here. I'll make that motion.
Alright, that's the power. Let go.
Likes that chair. We just need a second.
We'll second it.
David.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion care.
Thank you very much.
So Donna, any staff reports?
Uh, no. Just plug it along.
P O C D Subcommittee. Where do we stand with that? Uh, Matt would be back on that, would he not? Matt?
Um, I, I, I hadn't, uh. Um, I hadn't thought that all the way through, Wes. Um, I, I've got some time.
So, yeah, I mean, we can, you, you would have to reappoint him to the plan of conservation and some division. Um, the plan of conservation Subcommittee, you would have to reappoint him for that.
Is David on it?
I am.
David and Mark are there, you know, and I, um, I'm, I'm happy to continue to, to look at their, at their video recordings at, you know. Time and a half and, and make comments after the fact. Um, if that's, if that's what they want, I'm happy to, happy to join in too. Whatever, whatever is a pleasure of the commission.
Yeah, I, I think for continuity, having you back there would be great. I'm happy to step aside and I can stay focused on the affordable housing one.
Oh, I also don't want to take your spot, David, you know, it's.
Um, it doesn't sound like that's a problem.
Well, I came into it a little later than would have been nice. I missed the first few meetings.
Okay, well, I have been keeping up to date and, uh, and, and, and following, you know, passing comments along with Donna. So if that's what you would like, then, then I'm in.
Okay.
With your motion? Would somebody like to make that motion?
Make a motion that Matt, um, come on to the P O C D committee.
And by replacing David.
And replacing David and.
We'll second that.
Nice going. Um, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion care.
Um, so just as an FYI, the plan of conservation and development, uh, the next meeting is actually January 27th. I am doing a quick Zoom meeting with Glenn tomorrow at 9:30. He has a couple of questions before he completes booklets number four and five. Um, and then, um, he'll work on those and he'll have those ready, I think, on Monday. Um, and then I'll send out the agenda with those attachments and the meeting will be the 27th.
That's gonna be a, a six o'clock meeting? You know?
Um, you know what, Adam? I don't, I don't remember.
I'm trying to remember if we decided that we wanted it earlier or not.
You know what? I don't think that we did because I thought we would do an early one if we had a regular meeting. So that you would do the six, the seven with Glenn and then seven for the regular meeting. Um, but. I, I, I don't remember. I can let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
If, if that's okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, alright, alright.
Alright, moving on to section nine, other communications and correspondence, uh, any comments on. Uh, the permits issued. And compliances? And the monthly financials, kinda make my eyes roll. Um. Donna, is anything to, to discuss here?
No, I mean, you know, we've got a lot of money that we're gonna be turning back and that's mostly because it's tied salary. Um. So. It, there really isn't anything. I mean, and this is November, we're starting the budget process. I turned in the capital plan recommendations. And then, um, I just was looking at the new budgets. Um, for July 1st and started to temporarily work on those. Um, and they have to be submitted. I don't know, there's a date in there somewhere.
So nothing really has changed.
No, no, nothing has changed.
So 9C. Um. That was correspondence that was made, um, with the group. Um, and this was simply, uh, we've, Donna asked that we submit this to kind of cover ourselves. Um, so I think we just need to accept that, uh, this, this email communication was made.
We don't need a motion for that, right? It was just, well, seeing it and.
It just recognizes.
Yeah.
No, just, it just needs to be accepted as general communication, um, to a commission member. That's it.
Okay, now, uh, 9D, uh. There's, there's been a couple of requests, um, that we discuss in general, um. Uh, our business and one has to do with altering. And, and what are the rules regarding, uh, alternates and the discussion? It's my understanding, uh, that. If an, obviously if an alternate is elevated, they've, they have full voting and, uh, rights. I mean, that, that's not a discussion. If an alternate is not elevated during a public hearing. A alternate has the right to enter into discussion because they're part of the general public. But once the, um, uh, public hearing is closed. Then, then they cannot enter into discussion because they are no, they have not been elevated. And, uh, they are not part of the general public at that point. So that's a distinction of an alternate. Um, for a public hearing. For, for n- not public hearings. Again, if a, if an alternate is elevated, they have, they have full comment and voting status, just like any other commissioner. If they are not elevated, then certainly they can participate in the discussions, but simply not vote. But they, but, but not vote on that if not elevated. Did I sum that? Right, Donna?
Yes.
Is, is there a rule about, um. When you can or when you're allowed to elevate? An alternate? I mean, I know if there's not, obviously if, if there's not a quorum, you have to elevate a, an alternate. Uh, but is there, is there any rule about that says, you know, if there's, if there's six commissioners, you still have the ability to. To, um, elevate an alternate or you have a full commission? Does that mean that you're not allowed to elevate an alternate?
I don't know if it's not allowed, but it's just, it's, I don't believe it's part of Robert's rules to, to do that, to elevate. It, it, you don't elevate unless it's needed.
Okay.
That was, that was always my understanding.
Right, and it's, it's needed if you don't have a quorum.
Right.
Right.
And it's also good practice, um, to elevate up to the seven, right? So you have, so, so, um, you've got an odd number. So if, if you can elevate up to the seven, which are, which are the, the, the members of the commission, then that's good practice.
And we, and we have three alternates on the commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, Rich Chaska is still a, uh, an alternate. Uh, he's not been to the meetings in a very long while. I did speak to Rich not too long ago, and he said that he is intending to come back. Uh, just.
That's what he had said to me when, when his term came up. I did contact him and asked him if he was still interested in be. And stay, you know, being on the commission. And he said, yes, things had started to quiet down at the school. He was gonna be having more time. And he definitely wanted to step back into his role as an alternate. So that was why he was reappointed.
So, I have a question. At what point? I mean, I like Rich, he's a friend, um, but at what point do we, uh, it's good to have alternates. It's not good to have an alternate who never comes. I, when I was an alternate, I pretty much went to every meeting because that's what I thought I was expected to do as an alternate. And, um. I think we should have alternates who come to the meetings. And I think if they don't come to the meetings. Then we should ask them not to be an alternate anymore. And we should point somebody who does come to the meetings. And always comes to the meetings. When David was an alternate, he was always at the meetings. Matt's an alternate now, and he's here at the meeting.
I, I agree with you 100% and I think that. We're a lucky board because we're a full board. And so you've got, I, I don't want to call it a luxury, but, but you've, you've got. You've got the leeway. To not real, not, I want to say worry about Rich not being here. But like, you know, I've had issues with my, my inland weapons commission where I never had enough people and it was so important for us to make sure our alternates were there. And so for you guys, I think it's considered, I would consider it a luxury that you've got. You always have a full commission. So I think it depends on the commission and that's, that's what you have to decide.
Why can't we as a commission establish a policy? About attendance?
I think you would have to change your bylaws if you're gonna do that.
What is a minimum level of attendance? Why can't we have a policy? It's just like, uh, this whole section 9D is kind of what our business practices are. We need to establish a firm rule about how. Uh, about the presentation of information for public hearings and submission of information. And what is the cutoff date? Uh, so that, that's our, within our jurisdiction to deserve, deserve that. And right now, maybe you have prepared it, Donna, but we used to get a chart that showed everybody's term and when it was up. And party affiliation, all this kind of stuff about the commission. Just so we are, what?
You should have it. It was in your, I believe it was in your packet last month.
Uh, okay, I, I, I will plead, I, I overlooked it. I will look for it, but if it is not there. It should be there, okay? That's all I'm saying. I'm just identifying things that we as a commission should have. Information about ourselves.
It does not include party affiliation. It has never included party affiliation. Um, it just, it, I, our, this board has never been run based on party affiliation.
I, I understand that. More than, I mean, clearly I understand that, but perhaps we should know.
Up to you guys to decide what you want me to provide you, you know, I mean, I.
I know, I know that's the answer. I'm just putting it out there that the more information we have about ourselves and the way our commission works. I think the better off we are. It's just my. People ask me questions about the commission. I can't answer them. And maybe that's my fault because I didn't get it in my file last month. Did you all get it? Anybody else get it?
You know, I think, I think it's on the website too.
Yeah.
Okay, but did you get it in your package?
Can't remember.
I'll send it to you tonight.
I looked in December and I didn't see it in December.
Yeah.
Try November.
Members, uh, the board members are on the website with their terms. It doesn't, it's alternates, but otherwise they are there.
Right, it's on the website, I know. I'll send it out again.
I would totally agree with Adam. I, I've, if someone's an alternate and they miss more than a couple of meetings, we should certainly ask them to step down. Um, and if we really want to get serious about it, yeah, it requires changing the bylaws. But I know that if I were an applicant, I came here and I had been in a special meeting, the, our public meeting before I came and represented everything and there was somebody there, I'd never. Hadn't heard anything. I would certainly be annoyed, especially if they hadn't been in attendance for months and months. And then all of a sudden. Don't have any history or anything and then they're asked to, uh, opine on an application.
Yeah, well, to Donna's point, uh, we are a lucky commission. Um, uh, if it was a, a problem. That we were not getting, um, uh, quarums, then I, right now it's simply not an issue. It's just a principle, it, it, but it's not an issue.
Well, may, maybe it's a, a question that we can. Um, ask Mike if, if the commission decided to. Add something to the bylaws. Even if it didn't limit to a specific number, but it was a statement that. You know, um, alternates are expected to. And commissioners are expected to, to come to the majority of meetings.
Well, perhaps that's something that ought to go in the bylaws.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna add something to our bylaws, I think we have to ask our attorney. To write it. The right way.
Donna, do you think that's necessary? That, that we have legal advice on, uh, changing our bylaws?
Um, he, he did look at them the last time we changed them. Um, not this past year, but the year before. Um, there was a, um, there were a lot of changes that we made to it. I think they were all gender related, he, she, they, them.
No.
Um, but, and but, you know, Mike looked at them and I think he did make a couple of changes himself. So, yeah, I mean, I can, I can definitely tap into him and see. And I don't know, um. I would have to look at the bylaws and see where we could fit that in or if we would need to create a whole new section.
And Donna, maybe you could ask Rich. To start coming to the meetings because. We need him.
Well, he did tell me personally that he is going to start, so we'll see. We shall see. You know, certain certain other groups, like I was a member of BNI. And BNI has in their documents that a section on attendance. That you you're required to attend or, yeah.
So do the Ken Democrats.
Was that? Yeah.
The Democratic Town Committee does as well.
BNI is a business networking group.
Does anybody have a have an applicant in in mind? Have have a somebody in mind who would would be willing to serve as an alternate?
I don't. I I'd like, I know that Rich says he's going to start coming, and I think that would be great. And honestly, it'd be good to have somebody who is from the prep school community on our commission because we have three of them in our town and they're a large part of our town. But I think we should have alternates who show up at least to a good number of meetings and most of our alternates do.
Right. So I am in conversation with Rich on on other manners and I will I'll remind him of that. Then then hopefully we'll we'll see him. Perhaps next meeting.
Matt, to your question, I I when we were looking for an alternate, obviously, you were first in line, but I started thinking of a number of people that might be interested or that we might be interested in. And I didn't do anything about it because I didn't know where we were going to come out on this, but you ask, are there people that would like to do it? I can't answer that, but I've thought of people that might be worth considering. I'm just saying that because you asked the question in a very definitive way. I couldn't answer it. That I had somebody in mind, but I think we could I think we could all come up with some interesting people if we had to fill asleep a seat.
All right, well, let's let's move on there. And then we'll see what Rich does in the next month. And then then perhaps we can we can talk about a a section on our bylaws on on attendance. I mean, I don't I don't like it. You assume that people who are in this position would naturally come unless they can't for some reason, but it's not on a perpetual basis. So procedures for public notification of meetings. Alice, what did you have in mind there to clarify?
Well, if if a public, if we have on schedule a public meeting for next month, if anybody has any information to present letters or otherwise, what is the due date for that before the public meeting? Or does it run up until the day of the public? And it ought to be a standard like up to five days before the public meeting, public hearing begins.
Donna, is there a date? I mean, I think we've been pretty lenient in that in that regard.
Actually, I'm required statutorily to accept documentation documentation up to a certain point. And I know what this is referring to and about the letters that came in. I'm gonna say I stand aside what I decided to do. Nobody, nobody. And I'll say it again, no one called me about it. So I made the decision to to accept things I have. I I'm just gonna say 24 hours, 24 hours before the public hearing is when I can accept documentation.
But Donna, you're required, right? You're 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 required to warn the public hearing at least now, right? Forty eight hours in advance because it's because it's an electronic version, right?
I have to. I have to legally warn most people who are going to be in attendance at a Zoom meeting 48 hours before the meeting. My agenda can only be filed 24 hours before the meeting date. So what I do is I notify everyone 48 hours ahead of time to to abide by that statutory requirement. And therefore, the agenda gets filed 48 hours prior to that. If it's a regular meeting, I can add anything or you can add anything to the agenda as long as it's a regular meeting. A regular meeting is a meeting that is a date that has been set 30 days before the first meeting of a new calendar year. That's why you guys have to approve the meeting calendars. Those are regular meetings, any meeting that's not on those on that chief is a special meeting. The agenda stands as it is at the meeting and nothing can be added and nothing can be discussed unless it's on the agenda. So what I do is I do 48 hours to abide by the statutory requirement of Zoom meeting, and that's when the agenda gets filed. I can accept documentation up to 24 hours before the meeting for a public hearing, which I did during the public hearings for the conservation development.
Notwithstanding the continual comments, continual public comments to the contrary.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll I'll say that again, notwithstanding the continual public comments to the contrary.
So anybody
You know, I I agree with Wes. I think we're I think we're terribly lenient. And I I know I work in a different in a different geographic region than than we than we are in here in Kent, but the folks down in Westchester, they wouldn't put up with getting documentation for 24 hours in advance.
They certainly would not.
No way.
Like a week.
Right.
It's at least a week. It's 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 for the for the first meeting. It's it's three weeks.
Not just down in Westchester and in down in New Fairfield. No way.
But to that point, guys and women, that's why I think we ought to discuss whether we should be we're being too lenient, if you will. I mean, it's just that it needs to be cast in stone when it is due for something.
And I think Donna answered that question.
Yeah, it is. It is cast in stone, and it's cast in stone according to state statute.
And that's and that's 48 hours. Right. So I think the answer is 48 hours.
Forty eight hours is the Zoom notification.
It's 24 hours for
And then if I did, they they don't take into consideration 48 hours is for the Zoom notifications that if somebody can't doesn't have a computer, I need to make certain accommodation for them. They have the opportunity to do that. In order to make sure that I do everything the right way, I am doing 48 hours, accepting information up to 24. And I'm notifying everybody filing my agenda up until up the 48 hours ahead of time. The public meeting folder is a live meeting folder and documentation goes in there as I get it. And as it's added to the agenda. So that's that's a live folder that anybody can look at. As long as they have the link and the links on the agenda. So the link that's on this agenda will be the link that's on next month's agenda and the month after that and the month after that.
So Donna, for example, tonight, John, you said John Casey's letter went in. When did that go?
That came in today. So it didn't meet the 24 hour, but it wasn't for an application. It was just for a discussion.
I see. Okay. Thank you for clarification.
And any documentation that is received after the public hearing is closed becomes strictly communication to the entire commission. And that's why the Ken Cooper letter email was on on tonight's agenda as just general correspondence. And that was the advice that we were given by our attorney.
Which is a PS is not to be encouraged.
Right. Right, exactly.
Just as we brought it up, when I look at our agenda, number 12 is the pending litigation from the committee to protect rural Kent. Commissioners, we have somebody who's suing us, and you should not have communication with them regarding what went on and regarding what we heard and the and the decisions that we made. There's a pending litigation with us. So you should not be speaking to them.
And Adam, I I almost think that that maybe that's a discussion for the executive session.
Well, I think he is responding to my comment, and that's all I had to say about nine C. That's all.
But the commission prefer we are much more rigorous about this. So if it comes in prior to or after 24 hours, it just gets kicked to the next meeting folder.
Yes. That's what will happen.
And the Casey letter, we know we won't have seen it until February.
Yep.
The 24 hours is extremely lenient and hardship on our on our CEO. Quite frankly.
Anything else?
Alice, did did you have anything else that you wanted to review here in general discussion?
Not at this point.
All right, so moving on to executive session. Donna, do we need to do that for 10? Item 10.
I I would like to go into executive session for all three.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Make a do I hear a motion to go?
I will move. We go into executive session to discuss the three pending litigation items.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are in executive session.
Well, not quite yet because everybody that's still hanging out up here, I am now going to be moving them into the waiting room. If I can figure out how to do this. Yeah, I'm gonna everybody that's left into the waiting room because they are not part of the discussion. Who's David? All right, let me just make sure I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
You still have somebody.
Wendy's in there still.
Yeah. How's that? How's that look? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and me. Okay. And now I'm going to pause the recording. Recording. Let's start. Resume that one. I'm gonna admit everybody back in. Okay, everybody's back in. And out of executive session at nine fifty two. And I just need motions for agenda items 13, 14, and 15.
Motions for what?
To follow the recommendations of the attorney, and then I will go ahead and report back to the commission on the matter.
I make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor? Okay.
And do you want that same motion for agenda items 14 and 15 as well?
Well, yeah, I thought I was making a motion for all three.
Okay.
So David, you want to make the motion to adjourn?
Do I have a reputation now? I will move that we adjourn this meeting.
No, it was it was your yawn that that gave it away.
Plus, it's freezing in my basement. I have to stare to warm up. I'm about to like put my jacket and hat back on.
There you go.
27 degrees right now down here.
That's cold.
It's very
Whose hat is that, David?
That would be a Kent Falls brewing hat.
Wow, look at that.
Nice.
Who are they?
I'm in particularly enjoying this meeting because I'm not in my basement. And I'm in a warm room.
Well, you don't have to be in the basement.
But now I have to drive all the way home. I have an hour.
Oh, I see. Okay.
All right, and I'm enjoying just being back. So thanks, everybody.
Matt, welcome back.
Nice to have you back.
Yes, it is. Okay, guys, thanks a lot.
Okay, anybody else? That's it. We're good. Enjoy.
All right.
Hi.